Okay, we're live, let's go. Thank you very much. Firstly, my introduction is for the ultimate meeting, eating. Very important to check there, the chocolate went round the grass of the meeting. Of the town, thanks committee and thank you for all your work you've done in the year. And thank you for the offices time they put into this year. Well, we'll move swiftly into apologies for absence.
There are apologies from councillor Ahmed and also from Dean James as well. So we're happy to agree to those.
Yes.
Declarations for interest, will we all sign declarations of interest as members? Is there anything outstanding from that? Making a mention.
Just in relation to the twinning on the member.
Thank you very much, yeah, yeah, that's fine. We'll move swiftly on to minutes and then I'm going to take councillor Mordu if that's okay. Because he's kindly come to talk to us tonight. Right, thank you. Well, you've got two sets of minutes is that from the 25th of October, it seems had a lot warmer than today. And we've also got minutes of the extraordinary meeting which was on November the 15th, which kindly all turned up to again and made those recommendations. Is there any concern at those minutes?
Not happy to agree.
Are we happy to agree them as a true record?
Yes.
In which case with your mission of subsistence and order to allow councillor Mordu to speak, as is now a member of the committee, in going to answering questions and to talk primarily about how the Christmas parade went from the parade point of view on Saturday. Is that okay? Thank you very much.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you very much for the support of both committee and the town councils for the Christmas parade. And we know that without the support of town council, quite simply, the parade would not happen. And we rely on you for both financial and background support. The event management and all the staff turned out to help and we wouldn't go anywhere. But I thought in summary, it was a really good parade because it's a situation we were working within. From a parade committee's point of view, we had both groups and individuals who were helping to marshal dropping out at last minute because they might have been pinged or worried. And in spite of that, it was a good parade and I think the public enjoyed it. And it's good for business in the town as well. One of the worst times of the year. It's coming up to Christmas and people feel a little bit despondent and dark and drab. We can bring a certain amount of colour and light and good enthusiasm into town. I know certainly two departments were quite busy that day. Partly because of my custom, but it's a great community event and that's what it's all about. So I thought I'd come down and say thank you very much to town council and to events committee for the parade and everything you do.
Thank you. I'm going to move to item eight, which is eight point two, which is the Christmas parade. Just so that there's a continuity in the meeting and members' point of view around the Christmas parade and Amanda's report. So that before councillor Mordu has to leave, if you hear what's said and the reason allowing to join in if necessary. Is that okay? I'll go to you Amanda for your report. This is eight point two. Verbal update, do you have time to write reports in Saturday, I should.
I was trying to unmute as well. Thank you, Howard, for that. That was really nice to hear.
You're on mute, Amanda. She's not on mute now.
Clara Negan, come on if you say something to see if it's us or Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
It's morning, isn't it?
It was up to start with, wasn't it?
Well, if we discover that early, we will try and rectify the technology used to.
How about now?
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
We have, we have contact.
See fully.
We're on the dark side of the moon and they're coming back around. Amanda, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can, we can.
Good, okay. Yeah, thank you councillor Mordu. That was nice to hear, you know, that you appreciate all that we do. Thank you. Yeah, the parade, we had all of our trained staff out marshaling. We had, this year we enlisted the help of BORG, the Buckinghamshire Offroad Group. They sent three members out to help us, which was really good. They, and Amberon, they came again and they monitored the traffic at the Stratford Road roundabout. Because we used to get a lot of it that would come down the Stratford Road and then we would sort of be stuck around Build Base and bottom of Addington Road. The road closure went well. Yeah, I haven't had time to write a report yet.
Thank you, Amanda. Just from, I'll take as mayor versus she led our posse through the town. On how she thinks it went from her point of view.
Well, I thought it was absolutely, I'm telling myself today. And I thought it was absolutely great. It's a long while since I've experienced the parade because I've always been in the community centre with a fair trade store. And so to be part of it in that way was fantastic for me. I think I really enjoyed it. I hope I included the people I needed to include, you know, when I was going around and, you know, it was really good. And so thank you for the way you organised it. It's, I think it's really important. I think it was particularly important this year after everything that happened. Especially after we'd had to cancel the, because the lights switch on. I was just dreading the thought that we might have to cancel it, but no, it was really, really good. And the weather was fantastic as well, so lucky. It was really vibrant. I liked the music. The town centre was a buzz, wasn't it? And everybody with smiling faces and that says it all, isn't it?
Even those with masks on.
You can tell, can't you?
They're always smiling. Any other members, do you have anything to add? Just from my point of view, it was a real relief supporting the mayor that it actually took place. It's a good use of public money supporting the economy. And it acts on throughout the year and it rather helped set the tone of the Christmas trade in Buckingham. And it's so nice to see so many young people doing something and a little bit of normality. Even though we various masks and whatever, but it was nice. And it was also good to see so many familiar faces in the crowd, wasn't it? We walked through the town again and it was almost like normality. And that's got to be a good thing as we run up to Christmas. And I thank the officers for their work throughout the year to do this. And I think there's, we must record our thanks to the important factor with it. Without the community volunteers, Stuart event, who manned the bollards and the ballards. I got it there at the end, didn't I? We wouldn't be able to do it. We should record our thanks. Some of those people are ex-councilors as well. So we've come back to the board and we'll just, with the committee's agreement, a sensible moment, we'll work with the parade committee on an end of press release with it. Something from the mayor and something from on how we thought the day went, I think would be appropriate.
Brilliant, sorry.
You have.
I've got something out, you know, thank yous on Facebook. We've got the date of the next parade, 10th of December. We haven't got a theme, well, we haven't got a theme yet. That'll be decided in January. Our first meeting in a place to be decided.
No, actually was the first meeting of the parade committee, wasn't it? Yesterday.
It was, yeah.
You know, they hadn't actually met.
For two years.
For two years. So seeing they hadn't met, that's quite a good thing. We're here to achieve that, isn't it? Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to add that the Winslow Concert Band were playing outside Waitrose throughout the morning. And they're not strictly part of the parade, but they really enhance the atmosphere in the town as well. And I think, you know, we want to recall thanks to them for doing that.
I think what we should do, as you say, is a joint press release, because I have several thank yous and I forgot. You mentioned with the concert band, there's also St Bernadine's who are giving out free coffee and tea outside. The church in Shamers Road, it's Buckingham Ford, where I did thank, they provided a car. There's all sorts of people to help. And if you do the complete list, it's a bit too long to put on social media, but.
Yeah, shall we, shall we agree we'll do something between the three of us and town clerk? To make sure we actually do thank people, because thanking people is the important thing out of this. And without people, you can't do anything.
I know, so.
Amanda.
I think we should also thank the Devil's Horsemen. I think they've been in almost every parade that we've had at Christmas time. And the horses are always well turned out, well behaved and I know lots of people enjoy seeing them.
I like the horses.
Yes, they did get the chair's cup for the involvement in the parade all over, of many years now. And it's Gerald's son, I believe, is now involved in the parade.
In which case, we'll do that after the meeting, something suitable. And I thank the parade committee for their work throughout the year and the way they spend the public money we give them. Which is a jolly good thing. And we will move back to the agenda, Nick and Grace. And we'll move back to item four, which is action list. And many of the actions you'll see on things have got statements against them. And one, two, your concerns about that, it's safe. Many other things are actions which we are moving forward. But it's for the committee to ask the questions. Give you a brief second to look at it rather than, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I just wondered what's happened about the War Memorial Dedication.
And we had a discussion there with the town clerk and the deputy town clerk. I'm not sure whether you want to take that. Do you want to take that? Amanda, was you're here?
I'll take it. The short answer was it wasn't put on the event list for the coming year, which is obviously a tight year. So at the moment, there's no plan to do anything in the coming year. It's in three years, two or three years since the centenary. And there's limited support for an event other than from the council. So certainly the church and British Legion weren't particularly supportive.
That's a shame.
So, and the bishop couldn't make that. So what we would be doing is forcing an event on the community of which the community haven't asked for. So that would be a regret, correct, Amanda?
Okay, well, in the light of that, would it be sensible to remove that item from the mentions?
If that's a proposal, it's seconded. That's the decision. Are you checking that, Andy?
Yeah.
Okay, is that agreed?
Yeah.
Thank you. No, we'll strike that off the list and just. Is there any other questions or concerns on the action list? It is quite brief, but well, brief, right, and depth. And many of the things are within the agenda and things we're talking about. I take it that silence is content, is that? Am I, am I correct in my assumption about that? Okay, which case we'll move on to item five, forthcoming events. Five point one, which I know will be something significant for the town, which is the Holocaust Memorial Day. And which is something that was committed funded last year, funded the actual commission of the stone. So have we any questions and concerns on the report? I'm taking it that there isn't anything I would say that from a point of view of trying to make it the order. Being our mayor, I think, from our point of view, the most important person at that for us. And, and we did discuss before about using the Lord Lieutenant's List, that the type of people who would invite to it. As it's the first dedication of it. And primarily Margaret will, and the mayor will lead on it for the town council. And I know she'll be excellent and appropriate around it. And I can imagine somebody doing it. It's also worth noting that it was councillor, Ruth Neil, who's no longer a councillor, who's received an award, who actually opposed us doing this last year. So it's a little bit of a legacy which is left with us to do what we perhaps should have done a long time ago. Obviously one existed there in that, but it was the death to. So are we happy to agree the recommendation? And, and allow the officers to deliver this on our part in conjunction with Madam Mayor, who should be involved in the communications and updating on everything that she's going to be leading on that. Is that agreed? Right, in which case we'll move on to five point two, civic service. This isn't that report. Can I just have a verbal update on, that will be the mayor's civic service?
Yeah, that's all we've got at the moment really is the date. The rector, Will, is on holiday now, but the curator will be involved. And I've already flagged up with the chaplain that we need to meet pretty quickly after Christmas to firm these up. And we also need to list the United Teams. I know you referred to the Lord Lieutenant's List. Is that something?
Yes, and if you speak to the office, they've got that. And this is what protocol should be in Buckinghamshire. When it comes to inviting people to civic lists, it didn't actually happen at the commemoration of the tree, the green park. And obviously Buckinghamshire didn't follow the civic list. But I always thought that the Lord Lieutenant's List tells you where to be, what to do, and the order of people's priorities. And if the Queen's given us a large guide on it, perhaps we should be following her lead. As I do believe we're still a constitutional monarchy, despite what happened across the other side of the river. Political run over. And so if you, if you contact the office market, they'll provide you with that. And, and we have a mayor's before has done civic services. It's a personal choice. You know, around some of the religion and it's usually led by your, your own. Chaplain, massive, thank you, Margaret. And I didn't have a civic list because if I don't attend church, I thought it would, when I was mayor, because I thought it would be slightly strange to, to do that if you don't attend church. And it's probably not easy for the office, I should imagine. But no, and when you update Margaret as a council or as a committee, whichever is most appropriate. And when we already.
Yeah, definitely. But it is going to come pretty swiftly after Christmas.
There are people, if you go to your good friend Ruth, she'll tell you chapter and verse about it. She'll know exactly what's going on there. Right, okay, five point three, and which is on your list, which is the pancake race, which I believe would, we can have a verbal update on that. And if you give us a verbal update, Amanda, it's clear on the preparation for that, apart from we are going ahead, but. Who's looking, standing, sorry, I'm happy.
Yeah, all being well, Pancake Race will go ahead on the 22nd of February. So after Christmas, we'll be putting press release out about Pancake Race and asking people to start thinking about forming teams for the team race. I know that there's one team that is already talking about it and they are going to be winning this year, so.
Oh, who's told us that?
Yeah, it's always a fun event. Pardon?
Which team's that told us they're going to win?
The library.
I'm glad we're having a library.
We'll see.
It's to be a big part of it.
Yeah, I think the event over the years has grown and it seems to be more popular with adults. The adult races certainly have a good turnout.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do we have a time?
Usually starts at 11.
We, we used to start at the market, we had to do it in the town centre. And our fellow friend, councillor Ices, used to stand down by the old jail. And he used to make, everyone used to have to run around councillor Ices. And that was the turning point. Adifah enjoyed being the turning point, but Bucks wouldn't allow us to do it. That's why we moved up to the church on our ground at the church and doing it there. We'll, we'll update members afterwards, any information. And we'll invite the whole council to it because it's a council event. If everyone's happy, I'm going on to five point four, the food fair. Just who's going to update us on progression of that? I know it's been bad, through the conversations we've had, and that you're taking bookings for February 26th.
Yeah, 26th of February is the food fair in the community centre. Invites have already gone out to various traders and I think we've had a couple that have come back today, showing their interest in it. But at this time of the year, it's always hard to get traders to reply because they're doing all the food fairs such as Wadston, Blenheim, a toaster if that one's on. So they're all out at the bigger ones. But after Christmas, that's when they really start replying.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda, we originally got a date to actually be after they've done their flurry of food fairs. And so that then we're almost at the end of that. So we had to get a bigger uptake of it. Then we've got any questions about it? From the committee about what it involves and anything like that? Okay, well, basically it's, we will need to, closer to the day, we usually have a lead councillor on it. And, and I don't think we've got one at the moment. So anyone who wants to be leading on the food fair, it is a rather nice thing to do. Food is a rather nice thing here, isn't it? But, but we'll run it south. It's always nice to have a councillor equating with the event. Just to be able to talk to officers separate from vice chair or the chair.
I will put myself forward first.
Thank you, councillor.
I think I should be able to do that. I don't know if I'm starting my new job or I might just start my new job.
But, oh, thank you very much. We'll win it. We've got a lead councillor for the food fair, which is awfully, awfully good. Thank you for coming forward with that. That's brilliant. That's brilliant. And it has always been something successful. Just in February, people are looking for somewhere to go back now to. And all being well, that would be the case. We'll move on to item six, which you've got in your report, which is to do with St George's Day Parade. This is the, obviously the, the count, so scout, not the count. Counting very different to operate and the Freudic slip there, wasn't it? What would be better a count than a scout? But, but we have got it there. And councillor Murray.
No, no, I'm just wondering if you have a map.
And this is something we facilitate and support because it couldn't take place without us after the move that road closure order. Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Am I right in saying that it's the same day as the Spring Fair in Appleton?
Correct.
Is that going to create registered issues?
No, we did that for a reason because that makes it easier to notice the two, everything starting together for one.
We just, you know, we had a meeting and tried to work with Claire and Amanda and Paul to try and do things with the event list this year. Try and reduce the, combine the efforts of staff. And by tweaking some of the events over the year, we've managed to create some space for some home life for our town council staff. So that was what we were aiming to do. But that'll be fine. And just through New Town Clark, are they seeking anything from a civic function from there? It's usually contained themselves, don't they?
We haven't heard anything yet, no.
We don't normally involve it. Just it's a fun thing to watch if you're down in the town centre. And they got a matter of service, I think, in the children, don't they? So, you know, it's a good thing to school. Right, we'll move back to the agenda. Are we happy to agree the recommendation? Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Mr Chairman, can we just go back to the St George's Day Parade? When I was the mayor, I was asked to receive the flags at the church entrance for George's Day Parade. And that was like a civic thing, yeah.
What you were suggesting, councillor Murray.
So that's whether, whether they're going to try and do that. This year I don't know. They requested that I receive the parade at the church entrance.
Do you know, country?
I don't want to know. It's something probably personal between the mayor and the scouts. So maybe we should for clarity, through the office, see clarity whether they need any civic support. That's why I said civic support. But thank you for bringing that back up, councillor Murray. There was no, there was no such thing back in the day. And one did it, so we are where we are.
But it wasn't in full regalia, it was just the chain, it wasn't, you know.
Again, thank you for bringing that up. We'll, we'll, we'll ensure that we make contact with them so that there's no embarrassment around those issues. Which brings us on to item seven, which I believe Claire will lead on. Is that correct? The, she's drafted as a report on the market health check. Claire, would you like to lead on that?
Yeah, basically, two, three deputy town clerks ago, the, there was a report of a health check commission from NAB, which is the National Association of British Markets. They made a number of recommendations for things that they thought might improve the buck in the market. Some fairly generic ones, some a little bit more specific. And this report basically is just a recap of the recommendations they made that were agreed by TCNE at the time. And in bold is the current situation and where we are in relation to those recommendations.
Thank you. Am I right, Sir Martin Bell, that we're, even correctly or incorrectly, that we've actually got many of them implemented now? So we're actually where we should have been perhaps a couple of years ago. Is that correct?
Yes, pretty much. I mean, the world is a very, very different place to how it was in 2016. So some of the things about not having any gaps between stores and flipping everything up and make it look more compact is the exact opposite of what we're trying to do in that we do want gaps and flow so that, for social distancing, that we have a bit of space. But the market is basically running at capacity. Occasionally, when we've had very bad weather, we've had to reduce the number of stores. But we don't have a lot of space to squeeze anybody else in whilst maintaining a little bit of space between each store for, for social distancing reasons.
Thank you. Councillor Donnie.
Thank you. Just wanted to check, three point thirteen and three point fourteen, are the flea market traders definitely covered by insurance? Because it says under three fourteen completed and needs to be considered when the town council returns us for the new insurance contract. So I didn't know what they were. Definitely, they are, they are. The next question is, I was, not question, it's more a comment, three point fifteen, about involving the environmental health and at, at bottom, it says no complaints been made and there's a risk that by being involved with this campaign, the public may be led to believe those problems. I would see it opposite. I would see it that the public could probably appreciate the fact that we're involving outside services. And, you know, kind of, you know, I think that would be a positive thing.
I think until correcting, what we would do is the officers in the local council, if there was an issue, they would involve environmental health. What we would do is environmental's health duty to, to actually operate, not our duty to suggest they do. So I think we'd probably meet that. I know it's counted.
Could I clarify, Robyn, because it's possible I've not made it particularly clear. The Real Deal Campaign is Trading Standards Campaign that they're doing against councillors. The Real Deal campaign is Trading Standards campaign that they're doing against counterfeit.
That was what I was expecting. Councillor David, you're going to correct us. The Real Deal campaign, which is what the nature of complaints, that's how I read it. No complaints been made, and there's a risk of being involved in the Real Deal campaign. Probably maybe led to believe there is problems, is that correct?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the sort of market where our traders are really selling. We we don't have any massive concerns that they are selling any counterfeit goods. We've never had it raised as an issue or any concern that it's a market of counterfeit goods. I'm sure if you've been on the market, you know that we don't really sell branded sportswear or anything like that, which is generally is counterfeit. Just a little bit concerned if we start really pushing the Real Deal campaign, we might actually be putting it in people's minds that we do have counterfeit stuff. Where honestly, I've not any evidence or had any complaints to suggest that there is a problem.
Thank you very much. I will say from a personal, it's not worth, it's absolutely worth mentioning that that we took the decision and took on a new market manager, a market manager who's been making great strides in with the support of the office and Claire, when they actually maintain our stores, grow our stores throughout the COVID period. And if you look at the budgets, which you've seen tonight, that that they've shown some true positivity in that. And we should record our thanks to the collective who worked together, and Claire leads on this as lead officer, that they that they've actually managed to do this. Many markets, correct me if I'm wrong, Claire, are going the other way in the country. Our market is is returning gradually to what it used to be many years ago, which is automatic credit. So I'd like to agree that before we agree the recommendation, we call our thanks in a minute for what they've done. And are we happy to agree the recommendation? Thank you very, very much. In which case, we'll move back to item, the items of the event list. And I'll I'll just go to the big councillor of the day. This is councillor Heatherton, who with her husband is here today, supporting her again. Stepped in to help secure the community there, actually took place and supported. Councillor Heatherton.
Thank you. Well, Amanda and ex-councillor Terry Blensfield did all the groundwork and made a fine job of that. Terry was unable to be there all day, so Andrew and I just took her to be the presence on the day. Fourteen groups were booked, which I understand is less than in pre-COVID times. But it looked as if only thirteen had turned up. Fourteen actually was the church, and it turned out they'd been participating in the parade, as had one or two members of the other groups. The school children didn't actually turn up to do their singing. I don't know what happened there. We were working the COVID arrangements, we were operating under retail type guidelines. So face masks, homeless exempt, hand sanitising, loads of ventilation. And we have common sense rules for watching out for overcrowding. Everyone was very compliant with these rules. It came as a bit of a challenging shock at the end of the parade, when when suddenly we were those busy. But we didn't get overwhelmed, think it worked okay. And there was just a huge feeling that people were really enjoying revisiting a familiar part of town life. And in fact, one lovely lady came in and said, thanked us so much for it. And said, it was wonderful, she felt like she was coming back to life, which I thought really summed it up. We were keeping a tally with, like a, of people coming in. It was absolutely impossible to keep a running tally with them going out as well. But we just kept a grand total of people who came inside, just the adults. And we think it was about three hundred and twenty that came over the whole day. It felt COVID safe, I hope people agree. I think we were incredibly lucky to have beaten Omicron. Had it even been a few days later, I think we actually thought very seriously about cancelling, so how lucky were we? And even the weather was kind, it was dry until just at the very end, when the event was finishing. So I think it was, I think it was a very successful event and much enjoyed.
Thank you very, very much, and thank you again for stepping in. Thank you to your husband for supporting you. Members, any questions about this?
No, just thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah, and Amanda for stepping in that way and enabling it to continue because obviously you needed somebody to do that. And I was involved with the store, as many of you know. And I didn't really take benefit of the WI, we were doing refreshments. And again, I think they, I should have gone in and went then, and I didn't, because I was on the mission. But they should deserve, they deserve thanks for putting on the refreshments as well.
Yes, I I made sure I went around and photographed each store, mostly to pass to Amanda. And I realised that I hadn't got a picture of the WI, and how many had got them, but they were there. I think some people were really glad to come in and actually have a sit down and have a hot drink. I can't be afraid of that, so they didn't want to front off.
I mean, from a personal point of view, I enjoyed their sausage rolls and and their cake and their coffee. And although I'm on a strict seed diet, they went down, they were, and sat in really good company while I was drinking them. And we had as small gathering of councillors who'd been in the parade. We did thank them, I don't know why we we received it and we were.
I thanked them, I won't remember the names.
And it's a counter, now, we were, whatever, we were very grateful to it, I forgive it. We had a bit of a bar system who had got any money, but because you don't actually have much cash left. And when we got there, they were in a change, so I think that was, and I was thankful to councillor David for stepping in and providing me the sausage rolls, which was an important part of the day for me, as you can imagine. But it was a tremendous day, and thank you again. Can I ask through the committee that that we allow councillor Heatherton to work at the office to do a little bit about how she thought the event went and do a small press release so that the public know that she actually did this event as a lead councillor? And I think that's important, that we, people get to see new councillors doing what they do on behalf of the community, does that agree? And you had to do that, councillor. And and it's just that it is important that, you know, we are a team here and that people get credit for what we do. Thank you. Well, we've done item ten point two, so we will not repeat that again. On the Christmas parade, which is eight point three, which there's a report attached, which Sam has kindly provided to us. The recommendation is that we we carry on and do it again next year. Are we happy to agree that? And there's a minute, our thanks to Sam. Thank you.
And their assistant.
And her assistant, yeah, Gina.
Gina, yeah.
Yeah, and then eight point four, I'm going to, you've read the report, four agreed recommendations, and the leads on that, and then I'll come back to Amanda with any thoughts on Andy on it.
It was well attended. I'm not surprised because people wanted to come out and just be part of the event. And it was well attended, we started at five thirty, in fact. I was surprised that people came in too early. But yes, too very well attended, all the storeholders did well. And yes, it was a good event, there was no fencing ban, it's good.
Yeah, it was good, it was well attended. But thank you, councillor Murray. I'll come back to Amanda, who who reported this, is. Is there anything different added to the report you'd like to add?
No, there's no changes from when I wrote the report. As you can see in the report, there are some comments from members of the public that attended the event and and they enjoyed it, as you can see. I think people were just pleased, like councillor Heatherton said, to have some sort of normality back for a little while.
Thank you so much, councillor Donnie.
Thank you. You've got with Martin's company under two point twelve, try us, provided a PA. But then in the budget, it's got his name, councillor Martin Try, and I just thought that maybe it should be.
It should be.
Yeah.
Try us.
Thank you very, very much, we should have mentioned that. But we, just for information, Martin does it as a separate person, not as a councillor. And if Martin didn't do these things, such events, the society wouldn't get the support they do and did these work really. Councillor Donnie.
Also the music and the comment that somebody said, I did find the weird intro music a bit odd. It was definitely odd. We've discussed this, I know we've discussed this for many years. And there was an issue with the music licence, I think it was, and we agreed that would be purchased. So I think, you know, maybe if Martin needs suggestions from us, that might work well. But it was really bad music.
Oh, I like it.
No, it's bad.
What was the music?
I can't remember. I can't, it wasn't that memorable.
Nursery rhymes.
That's Martin's thing.
Which is fine if you've got a just six-year-old there, but you've got a lot of adults that come down to that. And I just think, you know, maybe we need to give them a few suggestions.
Shall we just take the suggestion from yourself, councillor Donnie, and members to perhaps we create a discussion with Martin about his back catalogue and and lifetime achievements with music. Perhaps it needs to be changed, it could be a legal reason for that, we'll see.
We've got the music licence.
I think in which case we can play off the line. I could play my back catalogue, but perhaps that wouldn't be really very good.
But some of the music has been going on for so long, it's now become part of the event to have different, young music.
Yeah.
So this is part of the fun.
Well, I mean, it's not a personal, it's a common, let's let's work forward on the basis that we all want to do well. And we'll have a conversation with Martin.
I did request that we use on the bus from Martin to say that. This will not have views on the bus.
Amanda, come back, Amanda, also given, not come back. You got your three, Amanda?
Yeah, I think the music we have now is a big improvement on what we used to have when it was just all nursery rhymes. There was this year, like the song Titanium, I know that was there, the Star Wars theme and different things like that. So it wasn't just nursery rhymes.
Charit's a fire we had, and Firestarter.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's when the bonfires were lit.
Right, so we're going to go with the fire starters.
It's so old.
Just councillor.
They were all fire season.
Okay, in which case, shall we move on? In case people get the idea we're not happy with what Martin did, I think we're always happy with what Martin did. We just have personal tastes, so I think that's where we are. I'd just like to draw members' attention to four point one within the report. You you're sure that it's been ongoing discussion about that, you see the company, our professional company, Titanium, fireworks, they're also, for information, are the same company who will be doing the fireworks in London New Year Eve, and they'll be lighting up the river, Big Ben, the London Eye and everything. And they have been approved and they were taken on by the president of the Prime Minister when he was the mayor of London, they were employed. And so I can imagine that that they also were the first people allowed to go into Westminster with dung powder since the dung powder plot. So they are what I would consider obviously being approved by the House of Commons staff. So have been of good note and and also being environmentally friendly. And we couldn't imagine that the government would want to employ anyone who wasn't. This would be avoided before present difficulties. So on that basis, I think they're a good company and we're happy to agree the recommendation and recommend that to the precept as we do that we carry on, does that agree?
Yeah, okay. Thanks to Andy for an awesome.
And me, and it's thanks to Andy's ongoing support. It is slightly less than it used to be when we used to have to try and build a bonfire ourselves in the morning. And having a different answer, I think Claire's got some suggestions with that, we'll work in next year. But we won't bring that up now.
I'd just like to say, I hardly noticed the music, but I was just all struck by the bonfire. I've never seen such an epic bonfire in my life. Congratulations, it was marvelous.
Yes, it was longer epic, and Claire's going to look at that for next year. I was definitely warm, stood next to it.
I can tell my golden.
Yeah, you could, well, we know, at least we did a proper bonfire, let's say that it burned. And whatever, there are some suggestions, we'll talk throughout after Christmas about. We had a discussion with Titanium about the timing of these things, and we may change that. But I think that's a committed decision, not for tonight. Thank you, councillor Murray and the officers for that. And of course, when we first started planning this in in March, or was it before that, February? People were saying you won't be able to have it, but councillor Murray said, well, let's plan to do it, didn't you? And we did it, and it happened, if we hadn't done it, it wouldn't happen. Many other places didn't take their decisions and they didn't have a firework display. So that was a good call, wasn't it? Thank you. Eight point five, there's a report here to do with the remembrance parade. Have we got any thoughts on that report from the committee? I'm happy to agree the recommendation, but committee should comment on the report. Just give a minute to the plaiting. Amanda.
Thank you. Just really, I mean, obviously, this is something that I think we've always supported wholeheartedly and the community would support our involvement in it, I don't think there's any doubt about that. The only thing I think that was different this year was that big screen. And just to comment on that, really, initially, it felt staying where we were. Lots of people trying to get past and being directed up there. It seemed quite awkward because everybody had to come past the war memorial effectively, and everybody was already gathered there in order to get to the green to see the screen. But they got, they did get through, and I did get some big positive feedback from people who felt that it was helpful. And I know even in previous years, it's become quite congested around the war memorial. And that isn't good for anybody, and particularly for little children, it can be quite intimidating, I think. So I think it it did take the pressure off to some extent. The logistics of getting people to that bit were slightly awkward, but I can't immediately think of how else you could do it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Some of the feedback that I've had on the screen, one was that some people felt that it would be better if it was on the side of the church rather than being on the other side of the green. So people were still facing towards the memorial rather than when their backs to it. And also, who was actually being directed to go to the area to watch the screen? And I know that some of the some of the ground packs, some people with very small children.
they had to keep them together, whereas the people who were ushering people were trying to get any of this standard manners to be by the actual foyer and all the other children to go to watch the screen. But because of their numbers of how many adults supervising how many children, they weren't able to do that. They had to keep all of those children together. So that needs consideration in the future as to who's actually going to be directed to the screen and who's going to be kept around the memorial.
Are we happy to take?
Can I answer a couple of those points, Robin?
Yeah, come on, Claire.
Firstly, as far as directing people was going, this, it was a very last-minute decision to do this.
Maybe.
It had been that the cadets were gonna, we were gonna ask the army cadets to help filter everybody through and that they would usher people along by forming a cordon along by the War Memorial. For various reasons on the day that didn't happen as we would have wanted it to. And it's definitely something next year that we will look harder at and hopefully have a bit more time to prepare and talk, talk through it with them.
So. While you're there, I know you're there as well, but it's difficult with you being online. Would you see any difficulty with councillor Dave's suggestion that we need, that it seems very logical to me, to leave the screen to the church side so that people are all at least facing the War Memorial?
We put the screen there because it was exactly, the sun will, at that time of day, I appreciate it's very overcast that day, but we didn't know, we wouldn't have known in advance that was the case. The sun is immediately behind the screen, which was the expert advice is that is the best position for you to be able to see it. If we'd have put it on the other side, then we would have had issues of the sun shining directly onto it and it'd been difficult to see. Also, we didn't know how wet the ground was going to be, the grass would be. And we were concerned that if we'd have had a downpour the night before, that whole area would have been a mud bath. And then people in smart shoes or wheelchairs, people with access issues would have really struggled to be on the grass. So decision to keep the people on the pavement and have the screen with its back to the sun.
Good point. Thank you. Thank you very much for the explanation. What we will do, and with the committee's agreement, is we'll, we'll, we'll discuss this further and maybe a group of councillors from the committee later in the year meet the parade, meet the British Legion about this because as Claire rightly said, this was such a rigid decision, very last minute. And it was, there were erroneous comments made on the day about the phone of it, but we have to really recognise that the British Legion funded a large portion of this from Peggy Dow's legacy and and the council supported it. I can't imagine the public being adverse to a support in something like this. Of course, we can always be surprised. And people do take against things for various reasons, but we're happy to agree the recommendation and agree that later in the year that a small group that will meet and go through this in more detail with Claire, who will adequately answer all those questions to make sure that any questions and concerns are answered. And I thank her for the work she done with Amanda and the town clerk and other officers who supported on the day. And also, again, if it wasn't for the people who manned the barriers and support this event, it wouldn't be able to take place. And many of those people on the barriers were ex-councillors and, you know, which needs to be saying. And thank you again for the team in the office. And we're happy to agree the recommendation. That slight amendment, but later in the year, we'll bring this back to a small committee of members to to better understand it because you were very much left out of it because we had to make swift decisions, didn't we, Claire? To be able to facilitate this. And it wasn't how we want to do this. We want you to better that, better than we did. Thank you. I'll go back to the next item, which is the Laisse Winter Fair. Have members got any concerns on that or to agree the recommendation?
I'm happy to go to the recommendation.
Agree?
Yeah, agree.
Okay, thank you very much. Extra slight switch on. I think it's only right that that you, you, you listened to the officer's report, read the officer's report around it and and the decision, how it was taken against a backlog of uncertainty and weather and whatever. And councillor Davy and I went down just to make sure when people came down, I went down to the question, just to make sure if anyone turned up. And I did a lot of talking with councillor Davies, explaining to people what was going on and no one was cross, were they? I don't think I'm being safe. Would I be right, councillor Davies?
I didn't say. Most people were understanding. The ones that hadn't seen the Facebook post already or the other social media posts that had gone out about cancellation. There was a few people did turn up not knowing that it had been cancelled. Which, but they stood around waiting for something, something, something to happen. And then it was just sort of, one by one, the lights came on.
It was a cheer.
They did.
They did a cheer, yes.
So, yeah, it was, it was cold and it was blurry, but it was safe.
Amanda there.
Thank you. So I'm sure it was absolutely the right thing to cancel the event on the day. It was disappointing, but just a question really, because I recorded the statement. The bard recorded something, the chaplain did as well, but I don't think it's gone out. I don't know what's happened to those recordings. Or have I just missed it?
A very good point. I don't know that. Town clerk?
No, I don't think it's gone out yet. Unfortunately, communication hasn't been well for a few days. Someone suspects it's just probably not got that work, unfortunately. So it will go out, but it won't be the timing.
I, I think it's appropriate. I can imagine that when we can do that, they'll put them out. They have a, they form an algorithm, I think, that they try not to put something out to spoil the pickup of the one before. There's, there's some fault behind the actual posting of these things, which I've had explained to me by the town clerk many times, which I ignore then ask the same question again. But, but they are on an algorithm and, and, and let's agree that they will go out if they're ready. Councillor Donahue.
Thank you. The other reports that we've got, they've got the budgets, like what we've spent and what we haven't spent in them. And this is the only report that doesn't have any figures. So we don't know much of Snow Globe cost or stage.
Point taken. When we agreed with Snow Globe, we were anticipating being able to use it and everything. I suppose that through the town clerk will bring those figures to an appropriate meeting in the new year.
Well, we can say like to members of the committee.
We'd be happy to do that. If you have any concerns about them, then contact the town clerk and we'll bring it to committee to discuss it. If there's something we're unhappy about, that's the appropriate way to do it. And we shouldn't hide that about what we spent. Just, you know, as it was, and I can thank the officers for turning it out and turning the lights on. They must have been really cold. And as I confirmed, councillor Davies for explaining it to everyone while I was doing talk. To everybody, but she was very good at explaining it and, and, and the children were eaten flavour, I think, I could say, once they heard the reason. Right. In which case, with the committee's agreement, we'll move on to that minute hour thanks to everyone, of course. We'll move on to the Climate Action Plan, which I'm hoping we can if this is something that stands out to everyone. Sections of this is to do with us, but much of it is to do with other people. Most of the things we're doing, they're working through. And it's been progressed. Is there anything that really stands out that you think we should discuss or are you happy to know the Climate Action Plan? Thank Nina for the work she did on it and have a further discussion about this in the year. Councillor Donahue.
Thank you. You're right. The officers engaged for local schools, do we have an update on how that's going?
Through Nina, she could give you a verbal update. I mean, actually, she could give you a verbal update to environment on it, but it is an event that really should probably come to here. And it was an initiative taken from Local Democracy Week, which came out, Democracy Week, which Nina led on and took through. So Nina, would you give a brief explanation of how you think it went, please?
So as councillor Stutsky said, it stemmed from Local Democracy Week, which this year was based on climate change. And both senior schools were really engaged in the subject. It was really heartening to hear that both senior schools in Buckingham have got eco groups which have sort of formed from school councils and are leading in loads of initiatives within their own schools. The Buckingham School asked for us to come back. So they specifically asked for Bethany, our office apprentice and myself, to come back. See, Bethany is a fairly recent school leaver. So it was great for her to go back and see a lot of her old, her old teachers. It was a really positive event. We, I think it was last week actually that Beth and I, Bethany and I went back. Again, there was a number of questions that they were asking about how we could help, where they could seek funding. It was mainly kind of signposting. They'd taken a few actions from that and they've asked for us to come back on a little follow-up event, which would be in the new year, which we're fine to do. They have also agreed to work on a art project, which is in conjunction with something that Bethany is putting towards her apprenticeship scheme, which is a art project on recycled materials. Hopefully it will be ready in time for these artworks to be on display at the annual town meeting in March. And we're hoping that representatives from the eco groups of both senior schools will be available to attend the event as well.
Very good. Thank you, Nina.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor.
Going back to the community fair, I thought I should look a bit official in some way. And I thought, well, I need to put a high-gear jacket on. The only one I'd got was, excuse me, it's a t-shirt. Was the one I've been issued as a flood volunteer. So I think on the back it said emergency response. But when I was at the Menchett's stall, he said, oh, what, what emergency are you looking at? Oh, I'm just using, I'm a flood volunteer. Oh, what flood, what flood action is that? He had no idea what was going on. And then he started telling me how I should be changing the geography of round where I live. And he was really interested in it. And so I said, oh, really? I don't know about all these technicalities, but you really need to keep your eyes open for the annual town meeting, which is going to be majoring on climate change, which is all the sorts of things that are all actually interested in. So it seems that there is he, he had no idea that there was an emergency flood response that had been set up. Well, we've been told about this, he said. I'm sure that.
I think, I think everybody's told about it. It just, if it isn't, there is stuff goes out constantly. And I think Nina would support that. Nina follows this to the nth degree. The reason we're so uninformed is because she's reading all this stuff all the while. And I think that we are going to be doing the Spring Fair, which is going to be based around the climate and action stuff. And we're also doing the Annual Town Meeting, which really is a meeting for people. So we are doing quite a lot. I think I'd say Lisa and then Nina close this item off, but that's all right.
Thank you. I'm just thinking that maybe there's other groups that our staff could maybe make contact with. Because the Menchett's group, they meet as a group. I don't know if it's in a pub, but maybe there's some future work that can be done, not just with the kids, but with adult groups. Because I'm surprised that they don't know about it.
I'm particularly surprised that I'm in chats because I thought we communicated with them well. And certainly for this particular subject, we've done press releases, it's been in the newsletters, we've done it on social media. I mean, they're kind of what, what the tools we have in our bag. But certainly for the annual town meeting, because that's going to be focused or themed around the environment, Nina's already putting on feeders, seeing as many groups we can find to invite to that into the Spring Fair. So we're using those as ways of engaging with many groups we can. So hopefully that will be another way of getting people to do it. The communication is really difficult because whatever you do, you're always going to miss a certain sense of you.
I think on the positive side, if I come back to Nina, is I was fortunate enough to be in the wall pack the other day and testing the economy there and making sure that the bar was functioning properly. And, and they were very keen, Menchett's, because councillor Davies managed to get and have a look inside their shed. And it is really, really astonishing.
Both their sheds.
Yeah, both their sheds. We went and looked, especially the shed that town council funded. They're very too pleased to show us it. Even though they showed us twice, once we hadn't got a key and then they had got a key, we had to return. And it was, it was interesting. But they're also quite keen to do, maybe, which we can take a conversations, perhaps do a little meet down there in the summer and sit out in the beer garden and in the wall pack and have a good look at it. And they're also, councillor Davies asked them about this.
Davies.
Davies, yeah.
Stop it, Hugh, for ages. Don't worry.
Don't worry. It's okay. Once I start to say something wrong, I can't stop doing it. You know I can't stop that. Thank you for correcting me. I can't see it. Pardon me, councillor Davies. But what we've asked them, and I think they said to us that they were actually taking it to their meeting to change the constitution to have not just Menchett's, but to.
But they've been, they're talking about.
They're talking about it.
Whether they will allow women to go.
Yeah, because that was one of the first questions that councillor Davies asked them. Davies? She could be happy about it. But no, no, anyway, I apologize. I just called you councillor without being bothered.
I'm not stressed. I'm not, I'm not trying to criticize the council at all for lacking in their own publicity. I'm just surprised that people are cooking up on it. I'm particularly surprised that, I think it was Jimmy, what's his name? I think the current chair of Menchett's was less than we thought about it. Andy Savage has actually got an environmental competitive Facebook group as well.
And it is very good. And it is very interesting. I'm just, as I said, I'll come back to Nina to close off respect because of the words you've done. Are you happy you'll go on and report back to us about your next meeting with children, young people?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's fine. And I, I would, just following on from the action plan, encourage members, if there are any other groups that they're aware of locally that they feel could input into the annual town meeting against our objectives within the action plan, then let me know. We have already sent out invitations to groups such as the Gorkot Solar Farm. Several groups that are involved with EV vehicles up at Silverstone and many, many others, but there's always room for more. And also just a quick note that you'll have seen from the red updates, which were on the reaction plan about the fact that we've now got another litter pick station, which Environment Committee agreed to install in Shandos Park, which should be going in in spring.
Yeah. We had a discussion about ownership of litter pickers. And the Environment Committee assure they own the litter pickers. And we thought, I thought we owned the litter pickers, but the council owns the litter pickers.
You didn't have a lot of them, did you?
No, we didn't. But I was always, they used to live in, councillor Murray, too, for quite a long time.
In a garage.
In the garage for different things with bonfires. So I was under the impression that, that we must have purchased them for events, but, but as we, can we just throughout the year, make sure we have got enough? Because we are going to be doing two stations, which is a fantastic thing. Because um, we are going to be doing two stations, which is a fantastic thing. And the uh, uh, compliments to Nina for that, making sure that they picked it. We just need to make sure we've got enough. Because um, uh, we, we, we do need to um ensure that. But that's just, just an amusing, well, slightly amusing comment around it. Um, Nina corrected us on who owned the litter pickers, which was a nice thing to do. But um, anyway, thank you, Nina, for that. And 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 later in the year, we'll do something on this Spring Fair on an agenda, which Amanda brings us up to date on the progression of that. Right. Um, anything else on action plan? We stretched that quite well, didn't we?
Just one, one thing.
Yeah, it just went round, didn't it? But it was good, it was good. And um, and and councillor Fran Davies has corrected me again on. On my use of the English language. And um, and that's always a good thing. Um, right. Play around the parishes. Um, are we happy to come and book this? Um, and um. And the offices for, just a brief question, Amanda, um, on last year, were you content with what we paid for?
You're muted.
I'm, I'm muted.
There you go.
Um, I think the figures were roughly the same as our before twenty twenty-two.
We, we pay Buckinghamshire Council for this service and um, so um. And they deliver it for us. Um, councillor Donoghue.
Thank you. Um, because I don't joke to these, um, do we have a banner or something that says it's paid for by us? Yeah.
We do. We have been down there before. I'm just seeking, sure, that it does go out. It does, because not every time I'm there. It does go out, doesn't it, Amanda?
We've got a banner or something that says it's paid for by us.
Um. The banner doesn't say that it's paid for us, but Buckinghamshire Council does put something out on their advertising.
No, I think there's something there, something I've raised for a long time.
I, I, I always agree that it, it, as a law in the Wiggers Committee, that something will go down there, so the residents don't think. Um, I'm sure Buckinghamshire Council would find us, I mean, and something, um.
Because I used to go, go through it with my grandson and it was then that I noticed it's nothing about the town council funding it, nothing at all.
Okay, councillor.
I, I wonder whether we could get a couple of, now we've got the logo, which is supported by Buckingham Town Council. I wonder whether we'd get some kind of banners on why or something, sticking the grass together. So we'll investigate that.
We, this is a problem that we have when we fund events and councillor Donoghue has been a strong advocate that. That we should, because what is quite confusing, councillors who are Buckinghamshire councillors. Sort of say, isn't it good to have there? It gives the impression that Buckinghamshire Council. Funded the event, which they support the event, and it's a partnership. So we just have to make sure. Like when we have money from other authorities, we have to put up a banner and a sign. And say that we've had it and go on then indeed. So um, and 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 even to get the money, it's.
Maybe might have been.
Might be. We had to actually have an actual thing on the like, to say where it comes from. Unfortunately, the council's now deceased, so I don't know whether or not this actually um needs to come down now. It's now historical, right? But I'd like to meet you, but um, but are we happy to agree that? And thank the offices.
Yeah.
And we move on to youth council, receive a verbal update. I think there's going to be a meeting on the twenty-third of May.
The meeting, so.
Um, to try and freshen up where we go with that. Um, there are, we, circumstances are where we are. Um, councillors have tried to do this. We've been from our end this year, COVID, children being in adult education, um, being at home, self. Um, educating, isolated.
Do year sevens, but.
Um, year sevens. So I think this is something that could ongoing. We had a discussion. Um, around the parameters of this in the office. Um, we have. Um, two councillors leading on this and and on myself. What time is the meeting on twenty-third?
I can't remember.
Because I should be in Salisbury um earlier in the day. Um.
When you get back?
Well, I'm getting back from Salisbury.
When the sun is up.
When the sun is up, yeah. Um.
I'll, I'll send a note to you.
If it's in the afternoon, it'll be fine. I do, I think we just need to touch base on this. Um.
Just a difficult.
It's been very difficult and that's not, not, not overstretched the matter. Right. Item twelve, um, which is um tourist information, reports on the thing. Um, we have done a press release on tourist information, which is going to go out, which we agreed earlier. Because this is quite a large percentage of the budget that we spend as a committee to promote the entire economy of Buckingham. North of the Buckinghamshire area. And it's worth noting until I'm corrected. That we are the, probably the only tourist information um place in North Buckinghamshire, part of the New York Kings. And I think they've still got tourist information in New York Kings, haven't they?
I don't know if they've dedicated them. Certainly there's nowhere else in Buckinghamshire dedicated tourist information centre.
And which is a, 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 a local authority which says that tourism is a big lever. To the economy, it seems um regrettable. Perhaps they'd like to come in and um. And perhaps we could charge them something to show them how to um run a tourist information centre and um. And and charge them a consultancy fee for getting it up the money again. Um, I'm sure they would ask. Um, um. So um, perhaps we need to be, we do need to be, can I just say this? I think can we agree today or write to the. Appropriate cabinet member and make them aware of the work that is going on in Buckingham to support the um, the economy. Uh, which they don't fund. Uh, 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 and maybe they'll pick up and go back into tourist information. Buckinghamshire's a very long county.
Is that true?
Um, you can ask, I'm always optimistic. Um. I may be being slightly, um, but you know what I'm like. Um, but um, but um. But I do think it's worth it because they may need to know what we're doing. And we, can we also just inform the Buckinghamshire councillors? Um, of the work that's going on because they don't know. Um, the ones who are on the community board list. Um, and maybe at a later date, perhaps we could ask them. Um, they don't know.
Wow.
Um, they won't know if it isn't discussed to them. I think that also the, a later stage may be. Not a pressure issue, but in the new year and that, and the spring and that, perhaps it'd be something which takes them from the board. To show them what we do for tourist information. There's a really good story to tell there. And it supports Silverstone, Wasden, Town, it supports um, Glection Park, it's linked to so many different things. And stone, of course, on the doorstep. And without the internet. And the people, the staff who work in there, because our tickets, all these things, to support the things, there wouldn't be anything in our books. And if we hadn't funded it, there would clearly wouldn't be anything. Um, Adam there.
Thank you. Um, just on that, those, that chart, I'm not sure I fully understood the, the twenty twenty-one. Figures, because it's got the blue is, it's that total numbers and then the bits above that are the breakdown of those numbers.
Very good question.
Because it says blue is visitor's numbers and you can just about read that. It's two hundred and five. If you look at the July ones, five hundred and five.
Yeah.
And then you've got the red local and then further field above it. So. Now, I think, I think the total, I mean, like for September, it was almost a thousand, wasn't it? I think, I think basically.
It's just breaking down, yeah.
Individual groups. And there's not a, not a total number actually listed on there. I think it's on the, it's on the um, on the axis, whichever one it is. I can never remember which is the X and which is the Y. So the blue, the blue bits are, we don't know whether they're local or third.
I'm, I think we should check in and send a note around because there's definitely something wrong in the way that's labelled.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you again. Um, for bringing that to our attention because it is important that it, it's fully understandable. Um, I looked at it and it looked familiar, so I didn't question it. Um, but you got it in fresh eyes. Madam Mayor, you still that it needs looking at again, which is really what you're here for. And it's a.
Just on your nipples.
It is scrutiny. It's called scrutiny. That's what councillors should do, is scrutinize the reports and actually make comment on it. I don't mean it in that way, Margaret, I certainly. Um, I think that also, can I agree that we'll work with the. Officers um at the appropriate time in the year to um, to. Take something to the community board about what we do on tourist information in Bucks. The, the good story that we've got to tell and the work that goes into it to support the local economy. And 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 we've got the town centre manager who, it's on maternity leave. But I think it would be something perhaps when the council had to return us off maternity leave. So we would get her to do because it's her job to communicate out to the wider. And I can assure you that if you were to tell any of the Buckinghamshire councillors, not necessarily town ones, on the um, on the. Community board, they probably don't know we have tourist information in Buckingham. Because there isn't one in Hammersbury, is there? So they probably don't think there is one. I think it's a good story to be told. Um, and. When I was suggesting they might go back into it, it, it just might be that we can partner some issues in the future. It's about partnership and and good working. So if you're agree with that, and we thank the officers for the talk and and thank the mayor for pointing out that. Good problem. Thank you. I didn't mean that. It's, it's a good, a good correction to make. Right, in which case we, we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the twinning event. Um, town clerk.
Thank you, Chair. So before we go through the item, you may have noticed. That we've recommended that we take four thousand five hundred pounds out to the underspend in Town and Bloom. But if you cross-reference that to the budget, we haven't quite got four thousand five hundred pounds left in the budget for Town and Bloom. So I'd suggest that if members want to, are happy to fund it, we use the underspend of two thousand eight hundred and twenty-six in four one O four Town and Bloom. Plus the underspend of one six one O, the fire, from the firework display, forty O two. And then any remaining underspend from.
That's the next one.
The Christmas lights, which is forty O one. Have I jumped it?
You jumped it. Yeah, that's what I normally do. Um.
I've got to say that again, another jump.
No, no, no.
You're on to an event.
Yeah, well, we can, we can wrap it, it's good for committee's agreement. We'll, we'll wrap it all in to work. Um, it's normally me to jump to it, isn't it? The twinning signs, that is. Um, but I think that should we just do the twinning signs. Are members happy? Um, um, to agree what the town clerk said on those biggest.
The numbers, yeah.
And the numbers. And I appreciate the show fans on that. Um, those agree to fund it. That's unanimous. Um, that's good because that means when they arrive early, people know that we actually like them. Um, because they'll be on the signs. And this is an aspiration of the council for a very long time. To be fair to everyone, it's been difficult to achieve because of getting the information. We've had tournaments of whatever. And this is our opportunity to get them up. And the price, we spoke about this before the meeting, and it's a late entry to the agenda. But this at least means that, that, that we will meet what we wished to do two, three years ago. So this is, it's good. Right, we'll move back to um, twinning event, which is the civic, which I. Do believe um, Madam Mayor sent something to me today, which was additional information around it. If you would like to. Express that to the committee and then circulate it afterwards.
Yes, thank you. I only received it at about four o'clock.
So I know, so you can just briefly pop the issues.
Yeah, and the Buckingham Twining is, ob- obviously the, the partners from Germany and France. Coming not just for the Saturday lunchtime, they're coming in the Friday to the Sunday. So the twinning association is working on a programme for whole event, not just for the bit. Um, so they sent me a proposed programme, which can go out, if you're agreeing, you can go out with the minutes.
Yes, yes.
So you're aware of what, what's happening and what's proposed. And it'd be good to um encourage counties to get involved. Certainly in the civic aspect, but as many of the other bits as they're comfortable with are open to everybody. Can I just um, ask Nina though, on the calendar, I didn't think I'd send it to you. The calendar that we've got about all the events and the meetings, the civic um visit. Was in on the wrong date.
Okay, because it was changed, wasn't it? Um.
It's a, it's a week early. It's correct on our agenda to turn up.
Well, that's good.
But I'm, I'm just concerned that councillors have received incorrect information. While members of this committee might, might think it's on the wrong date. So can that be highlighted in some way? That it, you know, giving them correct details.
And the committee happy firstly to approve the circulation information that um the mayor received tonight. Becomes part of the minutes for information. We can't say we agreed it because we didn't receive it, but for information purposes. And that we agree the recommendations um within the report for the event. Um, councillor Donoghue.
Thank you. It's just a question. Um, it says that there's forty places to chat councillors, partners and staff.
Yes.
Um, if you add up all of the town councillors and partners, that's thirty-four. And then you've got town clerk and wife and deputy town clerk and husbands, that literally is two spaces for our staff, nobody else. So I was thinking if my sonmate doesn't jump out of hiding, um, and there's like a plus one that I, I'm using. Could that go back to the office and somebody from the office gets invited instead?
My advice, yeah.
And Clark. No, I was just going to say, well, and added into, it's, it's difficult because of the numbers and because you're two countries coming, that makes it more difficult than the past. Um, so there's what you mentioned, also we do need to fit in the mace fairer, the town crier. Um, and the bard.
Well, then have one of my seats then, that's fine.
Okay, okay, we do have three, three councillors are on twinning, so that should take a bit.
That takes a pressure off a little bit. If they're becoming either on the twinning numbers or the council members.
It's very tight, though.
But we are going to be talking about this again. But this is really to allow us to organize it.
In, in terms of, we will, but next time we talk about it, we're really close to the event. So we've just, we've gone for the community centre because. It's our, the closest thing we have to a civic building. And it's the place we'd want to use, but there is an absolute maximum of a hundred and twenty seating capacity. So somehow we've got to juggle a hundred and twenty people. We're prob, we probably want to have more. Um, and and looking last time, I think we had fourteen staff.
Yes.
From the event sometime ago.
Everybody and a dog on the last one.
Now, obviously now we have more staff, so if you weigh all the staff we've got, then that'd be twenty-five people before. It doesn't, it doesn't work, so. Depending on judgment.
I, I, I'm, 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 people can get confused about the conversation. I think that the conversation stuff, we've got councillor Donoghue. Councillor Fran Davies has said um about others is relevant. I think talking about the staff and coming to dinner, perhaps in something we should do. Um, I think people could draw wrong conclusions from that, um, who wanted to. And what we would be doing, appropriate members of staff will come to a civic event because they represent the council. And and in civic roles, which they may be involved in throughout the week. And it's only good that they meet people that they meet who come for the twinning. So there's no um confusion about the reason why they'll be at an event. Um, it's because they will represent us in various things throughout the time between people, both Germany and 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 and. France.
You might be other councillors who are singletons as well.
Exactly. And it, it is a point. Um, we need to go out and get some costs and we need to get the product out, which is being worked on.
Yeah.
Having done this event several times, um councillor Mara and I have.
And then.
And you, yeah, we've all done this event several times. It always becomes quite tight towards the last section of it. When people suddenly try to put extra numbers on it. So we need to be quite rigid about this with ourselves and other people. And I think Madam Mayor would agree on that.
Yeah, thank you. I think when I mentioned to the twinning association this cap of a hundred and twenty maximum. I think and that we would want forty spaces for the town council. I think they were thinking, there are eighty spaces, you know, given there's a delegation from France and a delegation from Nottingham Bloom. And, you know, good members of the twinning association on the committee here. I think there's an acknowledgement that it is tight. So we feel it's tight, restricting town council members to forty. And they, there are eighty places, it's also tight, but we have got to hold that long. I don't think we've been alternative.
We, we had it before where we had to.
Remind them, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, remind them that if they're trying to try to. Yeah, remind them that they sometimes try to push the margin at the last bit, and it's quite difficult to cater us. Councillor Fran Davies knows about these things, he will know that they're actually sorting out some extra bills if you haven't actually prepared. That was quite a major thing. Um.
And.
Depends, she says, uh, but um.
Points well made, actually.
Points well made. Um, can I suggest that, uh, would it be useful um? In the sense that we have someone who understands about catering, would would councillor Fran Davies be happy to. Um, be involved in discussions with the office about the catering um of this?
If if the officer um decided that they needed some um. Backup and support on that, then um I'm I'm sure that they will be capable themselves of doing.
Yeah, I know, it's just that, that, you know, I I I.
If you want me to look at, look at what people are quoting and things, then.
That's really what I'm I'm asking is, but you can give an idea whether what we're actually being offered.
Value for money.
Value for money. Um, um, I I would look at it, if you're on a council, um, generally as ten places. You'd look at it on on the basis of what they're actually paying for, if 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 it's um whatever, and and that is making sure we're spending money wisely. Are you happy, Madam Mayor, to um obviously liaise on our part with the twinning? Um, on this, and if there's anything that you need to do, you'll come straight back to the office and we'll work through it. You happy with that?
Yes, that's, yes, that's fine.
Because I I mean, we've got a limited time and everything will be here.
I know, and we can soon run round.
Yeah, get Christmas over, February will fly, be here tomorrow, and we'll be watching you welcome them. Quite fun, quite a fun thing to do. And then if you, hopefully you get the trip back, which is even more fun. Um, but um, no, are we happy with that, to agree the recommendation with the additional comments? Um, um, round it and 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 move on um to what will be a, hopefully. Nice day for us and um meeting other people. Right, item sixteen, which is, which is um budgets. You're seeing appendix F. Um. I I told you it's me jumping stuff, didn't I? Um, fourteen, yeah, um, do apologize. Um, we did jump fourteen and 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 thank you for that. Um, I put aside the town clerk, I jumped and then I did it myself. Um, fourteen, um, this is Friends of the University. Uh, we had a fair, lots of conversation around this, the motion was removed. From town council, where clarity was sought over this, because we were advised that things were different to what. We're now being advised, and let's just guess, um, which I think is, it wasn't, we were going to after joining, but you couldn't necessarily join that thing. Am I correct in saying that?
It wasn't clear.
It wasn't clear. It has been clear. On that basis, with the correspondence received, was to have seen in. Are we happy to take the recommendation back to a future council meeting? Um, councillor Don, do you?
Thank you. Um, do we pay for other groups that we represent on?
Yeah, for for example, we do pay a small subscription to the Friends of Buckingham.
How much is that?
I honestly can't remember, certainly, certainly it's double figures.
Is it seventy-five pound a month?
Yeah, similar amount.
Okay, so I thought it was a bit higher, but, yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I believe that 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 figure is actually, I think we were told that it's the same. But this for other bodies, similar bodies on the friends. And I do think because of the way we've, this has panned out so far. Having now this been agreed by the friends, I think it would be remiss of us to decline. I think we should be taking it forward. We acknowledged that we should probably have a representative, didn't we? And that we sort of tried to parachute one in, and that was being done in a more formalised way. I think we, it would be stupid for us to say, no, we're not going to do it.
Parachute, well, I mean, that's an interesting thing. I like the approach in so many universities. Well, we are what we are, and 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 we now are a form of communication which matches the aspirations of the committee. To recommend to the council, which isn't a committee decision. Are we happy to recommend it to the council again? It isn't too precious.
No, I'm not. I I I I listen to everything that went on and and I respect what everyone else wants. Um, but I I find it very difficult to say I'm I'm very keen to be a friend of the friends.
That's perfectly fine. It's perfectly fine. Um, you you you're perfectly entitled to disagree. That's. That's okay. What it is about, it 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 came around because we got. Potted a member of the um university on to it, but it's like, we can't be here because they're unwell. And 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 it was, came out of that feeling of goodwill at that meeting that perhaps we ought to be a friend of the university and.
Good point.
We are, we are, and um, but you're perfectly able to vote against it now and vote against it at council, that's perfectly fine. Does it mean that you're against the university? It 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 just means that you're going to give it, and that's perfectly all. Um, councillor.
Sorry, I have already spoken on this, but.
I have, all them sort of strict rules.
No, um, we, the the university is clearly a very important part of our town. And we've got various ways of facilitating liaison, the main one of which is the Pontio Group, which is now active again. However, I do think that that keeping these sorts of links going has to be beneficial. Because you want as many points of contact and communication as possible. And maybe pick up slightly different aspects than you would from the Pontio Group.
Um, so I'm not clear what the Pontio Group is anyway, and and it wasn't so much um a link to the. The university, it was a link to the Friends of the University. Um, and and I've probably got a different um stance on it than other people in that I I am a one of us anyway. It's, uh, it's, I'm just, I'm not sure what we would consider, but it's a valid question.
I think it's a very valid question, and I I I I I totally respect the question.
Yeah.
What we are stuck with is where we're stuck and 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 you as an alumni understand the university better than. Many of us, and and I I respect the mayor's point that that we need to keep building bridges with you. The only thing I would say that, listening to the conversation, that perhaps the friend of the university should be. Um, he or she, or she or he who's mayor, because they represent the council in an apocalyptic way. Um, in, when I say apocalyptic, we are apocalyptic, but I mean, it would seem logical that whoever's the mayor or mayors. Is the friend of the university, at at all the depth, you know, um, if that's agreeable, but but um. To agree that the actual value of seventy-five pounds and 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 level this out, i- it is the important thing. That's something that for council can prove the guidance and hearing meeting can can actually work with the town clerk on how. That best goes forward.
Yeah, right. I think there should probably be two aspects to this, and we did just put it on the agenda while doing the call, but there is, the 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 main issue, as you're saying, is. Do we become a corporate friend of the university? And the second substitution might be about who attends something.
Yeah.
But the big issue is about being corporate.
But we have people on the council who are. In other capacities than the university anyway, and we have people on the council who have no connection to the university and whatever, but I think. I'll take councillor Don again, and then then hopefully we can move to the vote, and it's perfectly fine to object. Um, councillor Don.
Thank you. Can we, so is going to go back to full council. Can we maybe have um what the Pontio Group and what the Friends of the University, what those two groups would benefit us? By being part of, because you're right, we are, you know, we set Pontio Group apart.
They are very different.
Bit of good to, for new members and for myself to know what the differences will be.
I think the Pontio Group, I think that'd be useful for.
And back to full council.
I think we don't need to discuss it in the sense of discussing, but I think what we need is an information. About what the aspirations of Pontio Group is, what we aim to actually achieve by having it, and what is actually delivered. I think that would be a sensible thing. Being a friend of something is slightly less. Um, to correct it, it's slightly less obvious in the sense that you're really there just to listen to the ambience, the conversation. Of what's going on in the university. And if we're there as a corporate, I believe that's correct, membership. That means that we're not deceitful in our membership, and that's a completely different thing. The Pontio Group is something which this council agreed to do. And I think it's only right that that information is sent out um. Probably, I don't think we need to have to discuss it because we're not challenging it unless I'm bringing something to change it. But I do think that something's around there in the near information to all members, what the two things will be if council agrees. You know, and I'm not, don't think we need to take this to the next.
Right, go full council, that's fine.
Go in general, should it go to full councils.
It it tends to suppose to just be the things that are, can't wait, so this can wait until full council.
This will, this will go to full council, yeah. And and that gives Madam Mayor and herself a chance to do all the other bits around it. She herself will um and make sure it's on, you can really write for that, won't you? Um, thank you. Um, that was recently, whatever. In this case, we can now return it up to where I was earlier. Until I jumped an item, um, which was, um, which we were going to budgets. Um, which is four one, four one two, um, appendix F. Um, any concerns? Comments?
What, we're on the first page?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say do it in plural rather than go page to page. Is there any questions you wish to raise? Because going page to page sometimes prevents people. Looking at it and turning back and asking a question, because you bump on the page and then it's their opportunity to speak. I'm happy to do it the old fashioned way, so everything is by concern on totality.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, which means.
Yeah.
Um, thanks. Um, so the first page, comedy night expenditure, are we keeping that? We're we're not losing that money, are we?
No.
No, although the way the comedy nights have worked in the budget is, um, we budget exactly the same amount in command expenditure. So it's still in the draft budget for next year, because it kind of doesn't actually affect the reception, no.
Yeah, no, that's that's perfect, thank you. And then there was, um, on page two.
Yeah.
Under accessibility, so four two five four, access able. We've got two thousand pound there, but we're not using them anymore, are we?
No, so on the draft budget, I've slightly changed the name of that budget to be accessibility. And I'm and I'm going to seek a meeting with access for all to talk about what future recommendations, to to run and take away that budget, you might propose to keep the budget. And give it a broad definition for keep it around accessibility of some sort.
So it's not going second, that's fine.
No, it won't, we we can have it in that decision.
And then, I think it was, um, and then the next one's on the draft budget, which is a different item, so that's, thank you.
You have to do that. Anybody else got any thoughts on that? Just that if you go one, two, three, four, sometimes people don't get to speak. One does enjoy speaking, and and we we go and check to that. Um, right, okay. And in which case, move on to the budget recommendations. Um, these have been worked through, and as you can see, it's 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 partners into the future. On events, um, what we do, where we like to be, and what the aspirations of the committee has been. Through remix and stuff throughout the year. Councillor Don.
Thank you. Um, so the first one, um, um, under three, um. We've got three oh one, music in the market, and we've got two hundred and fifty pound more to cover the cost of security, that's that's why I'm not pumping that. And my question was with ban jam one, which is two under, it's a difference of seven hundred pound, and it says to cover increased costs of security. What's the diff, why why is there such a big difference from two hundred and fifty to seven hundred?
That's a very good question. They were both to be the same.
Okay.
They should be the same.
There is some.
That's an old number got in here from an previous budget, we may, we leveled them up in previous years, didn't we, councillor Mara? We leveled the budget up. So that's the old numbers brought back into this from previous years.
So just to clarify, the figure should be the increase of two fifty plus the increase of three and a half percent. Which would be. Four thousand seven hundred and seventy-three plus two hundred and fifty. Which equals four thousand and twenty-three.
So that's for both?
Yeah.
That's twice.
Yes, that's four thousand twenty-three for ban jam.
Right.
We'll drop that figure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Were there any other things on there? Because I, I've got these things directly.
Sorry.
Um, go on, go on, I'm interested, I'm interested.
Um, how many pages down now? Um, so under six, but it's on the, oh, page five, I've seen. So we've got under four, one zero four, town in Bloom.
Yes.
Um, ten thousand pound is quite a lot when the forecast for twenty-one, twenty-two is five thousand. Um, that we spent, so what, why has it gone up to ten thousand pound if we're not spending that?
So the forecast is an error, so the problem we spoke about with the twinning, is actually we have spent eight thousand one hundred under town in Bloom. So my forecast is too low, because I didn't realise a couple of payments had just been posted on the system when I was doing the budget. So therefore, actually, this is probably the right one.
Okay, so it should be the ten thousand.
And because last year, we didn't spend some of it because we couldn't put it out during Covid. So the figure that we spend isn't the same as the figure we budget.
No, very different.
Which is very different, because we will hopefully have the spring planters out and the autumn planters, and we took the decision long ago to have both.
Yeah. My final question, I think, is, um, the dog show, which is four two one three. Um, I don't know what we take in in money on that one. Um, but we're getting less and less sponsorship prizes, and the manager and I spoke before about perhaps we might have to purchase. Um, a couple of the big dog food bags, so we've got an increase of about fifty quid. I was wondering if we could have a bit more money in that, um, at least to the same amount that we take. So it it neutralises it out.
Well, you're gonna, because we have to suggest a figure, you suggest a hundred pounds.
Yeah, if that's okay. So we can buy a few decent prizes just in case it gets stopped again.
We have a second effort, I think, isn't it? I think, have the Mara seconded that. So is that agreed? Yeah.
Thank you very much. That is, that's it, we're done. Yeah.
Well done, you. Um, thank you for spotting that error. That is very important, like. The mayor spotted that error, it 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 is very important, that's what we're here for. It's called scrutiny. That's well done, well done. Are we happy on that basis to agree the budgets submitted? And and have a recording vote on it?
Yeah, record a vote.
Nice, you know us.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Right, we're getting to seventeen, we've agreed one precedent, some prejudices already, haven't we? Um. Can I just, see you, we, earlier in the year, we said that we, it hasn't happened. That we do presidencies, including the committee about how we thought about Covid and and what we were going to do now the vector. I'd be very happy to go down that road because it's been a big year for events. And it's been an absolute, cannot be said strongly enough how much work our office has invested this year. To make sure Buckingham actually got up and thriving throughout the summer. And councillor Mara, chairperson, then we know the amount of work that goes into that. So what I was suggesting is that, can we have a brief line from all the members of the committee about what they thought was important throughout the year? And, because it's a committee here, and I'll add something towards it. And about the importance we found at Buckingham getting going in twenty twenty-one, as we move into twenty twenty-two. With our optimistic look towards the future, what we can do with the community, but I want it to be everybody, I don't want it just to be. Myself with some guidance and the officers around the, the matter, it's something we agreed earlier, but it hasn't happened, but this is the appropriate time now to do it. And we can express our gratitude for what it is, because I look at the amount of hours that we put in, particularly through the fringe to everything else. Um, and and the amount of time we all put into those events, and if that took place. And if they hadn't took place, Buckingham would have been like other places in the country, a bit stale, nothing going on, nothing happened. We took the right decisions at the right time for May to actually make sure we were there. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I mean, probably echoing some of what you've just said, Chair, but, um, because of the way the last, um, year and a half, nearly two years have been. I think many people haven't, many public players, unless they were normally done, or even weekends away. And so any events that we've been able to put on here, I think have been particularly appreciated. Because, you know, the, the climate has been so dull, you know, because it's been so restricted what we can, can do. So I think it's been especially important that we've been able to have the events that we've had. Um, and I think they have been especially appreciated by the community. Um, but, but it's obviously been a difficult call because, you know, all the time, you don't want to increase risk for anybody. But a lot of the events have been outside events and that felt much more comfortable than inside events. But obviously, the virus still hasn't gone away and we, we can't ignore or ignore that at the moment. And I think it's been clear throughout that we've been following the government guidelines and we've got to continue to do so. I don't think anybody would disagree with that, anyone. Um, but yeah, it's been very significant what we've been able to achieve. And I think it's been especially important to have the events.
I think it has.
And I think that will continue in the coming, certainly in the next six months, if not the whole of the next year.
What we are assured of is that the officers will, um, Claire and Amanda and, um, other, and the town crapper, uh, put in a lot of time to make sure that we peg everything, um, to make sure planning for what's possible, what isn't possible. And then doing what we could do at different times and moving events, that's what calls to give some of the closing of the event. But I do want to have something from the committee, Councillor Murray.
Thank you. My only criticism is that this is not the downtown events committee. There are a lot of people who just sort of put the events in, it's a council, it's the whole council, which is a small committee that do it. And I would like volunteers and contributors from the whole council. Uh, and I think that there's a mindset, some of the other councils who are not on this committee, that DCNE should be doing everything. But it's not, it is that we represent the whole, the whole council, not just DCNE.
Is this why Amanda emails all councils, that's exactly what she does.
I, I hope. We don't seem to have a response.
I know, I hope Councillor Murray, what you say, won't change. I hope that people will come forward and be involved more. Um, people are very happy to talk about numbers and, and, and figures and what they think about something. I think to actually think something about it, probably better to have done the wheel once and actually been to all the events. Um, and actually been part of it. And I think that's, uh, uh, I've got a view on something, you know, but, I mean, we've got, this committee has been up and running now since the election. New members have joined the events and we share the responsibility. I take on board the measured words of the mayor, the, the, the importance of this year. And that's what I'm trying to communicate, um, from us all, um, to the public in the new year. As a celebration of the achievements of the officers and the aspirations for the new year to do the right thing, as Madam Mayor says. At the right time, in proportion with whatever regulations are, and that's really what I, I want to, is a good news story. We did agree we'd do this, we just haven't done it up to yet. So is that agreed, the press release? Thank you, um, very much, um.
And this is an important year next year, is it jubilee?
Yes, we are meeting to do that, but we're, we're, we've got, we're all going to be meeting to discuss that. We've taken those decisions in the new year, we'll have subgroups and, 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 and that's all been agreed and we'll come through and work together to achieve that. It's a very important thing. And never so much so as, uh, uh, at the moment, people do mean something good. There are, I need to for chairman's items, I think pretty much what I've said in the press release is chairman's items. Only to say that I, um, I wish you everything for Christmas and the new year, and I hope that you all get to see your families. And I hope that, um, that it, it, it turns out to be a, a better twenty twenty two for everybody than it's been for twenty twenty one. And mind it too, that we have gone into twenty twenty two with not everybody we had at the beginning of twenty twenty one. And we have to take that, um, as it is, and that's a stark reminder of our individual and the community fragility, I think. And we have to think about that. Um, Councillor Frand Davis.
Um, I was just going to, um, um, mention the Community Phantom Mine, um, which will be taking place in January. Um, it's just next door to us. Um, and it suggests that it might be, um, a good idea to show our, our, um, united support for the Community Phantom Mine. Um, and arrange maybe that we could go on mass.
I like that, um, yeah.
Oh, no, we can't.
I, I like, I like the spirit of that, but we were going to buy our tickets tomorrow, actually. And we would have to get on with it because, you know, to, to block off a lot of tickets might, might be easier said than done.
Um, but the tickets are actually online in the tick which we run.
Yes.
So if the committee wanted us to set something aside, we could do.
But we have to agree for which.
But we have to agree for which performance in the next couple of days.
What dates?
Don't have that luck.
Oh, correct. Can, can, can we agree what Councillor Frand Davis said? And then work out how many dates it is and make sure that at least there's two tickets for each event that we want counted for then. So it can be a couple or, or whatever.
We were going to go on the twenty third, January the twenty first. I can't do five days. I don't mind that, but, you know, I think it is.
We've actually volunteered to be, um, um, volunteers, I think, but we haven't been enrolled yet because, um, we're not sort of stages with it. But I think we're getting on forwards.
Yeah.
So, so I'm not being otherwise engaged. Although I, I wanted to be backstage anyway, so, um, but whether, um, that didn't sound clearly for me to watch it as well, but, um.
But I think it's a good, it's a good suggestion, we'll take it forward through the offices because it isn't a general item.
Then gets a hard number, you're trying to get a meeting.
Was just that members intended and know that Madam Mayor has already chosen a day.
I think, I think it's a really good, good idea to show our support.
Of what they're doing, and it seems to be.
Such a lot of hard work to go to the internet.
And it's worth acknowledging that, um, Councillor Troy will be out there every night, helping build the set.
Yeah, not every night, I hope.
He, he, he just got out there a lot, helping build the set and that.
Well, it's shifted sooner, it works.
Yeah, shifted sooner, yeah. Um, but no, thank you for that and, and thank you for the added position to that. And, um, and hopefully on the twenty first, I'll be down in Stonehenge. Um.
For January.
And, and the twenty first of December. Um, and, um, and, uh, uh, and I'm not, aspirations this year will put me low. I don't think I'll get to blow the horn at Stonehenge this year, that's probably what's a lifetime thing. But weather committing and health committing, I mean, I should hopefully go down there. And it's rather, if anyone wants to join me, um, um, I'll be setting off at about three in the morning. Um, um, I'm sure by the time you get there, you'll be glad to get out of the car.
So that's it, get up in the car, shift to the drive, yeah. He actually solves this, his three something P M.
Not according to the druids. Uh, according to, um.
They like to do it at some.
It, it, it is, it's tremendous and powerful regardless of the, the, whatever, to what stands down there and watch, watch the energy of the sun coming up amongst people who aren't wanting to watch the energy of the sun and, and the sun next face of the atmosphere. We wouldn't, yeah, wouldn't we?
We're still on YouTube.
We are still on YouTube, yeah, we haven't, we haven't closed the meeting.
I'm, I'm not worried about that. I'm never worried about things like that. But anyway, we will close the meeting with that passing thought and, um, but everyone, um, has.